If you could all rise for a invocation by Shane Sevy from the Nazarene Church.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we just, we thank you for this time that we can all gather to better our community. Father, we lift up each individual, each person in this council today that is making decisions for our community. We lift up the citizens that are here with us as they speak out on things that concern them, Lord. We lift every, all this up to you, Lord. We pray that the decisions that are made are in your will, that you would lead us and guide us as we make these decisions for the better of Fostoria, so that when people see Fostoria, they know that your will is being done there. And Father, we just thank you for our beautiful community that you've given us and all the support, and we just pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Turn face the flag. I pledge allegiance. You may be seated. This evening is the first council meeting we have where video will become our minutes. So I'd like to remind everyone, mainly the council members and the people in the jury box, the city officials, that it's critical that we speak into the microphone, because we can only have one conversation going on at a time, and that video recording needs to record our voices as we speak. And please wait your turn to speak into the microphones so that you can be heard. I know that in talking to the minutes, we have a preference to make sure that those minutes, once they're recorded, and if at all possible, get uploaded immediately following the meeting. We really don't want to perceive that we're editing these minutes or this record to adjust the audio settings or anything, because we don't want citizens thinking we are editing the video. So it's imperative that we speak into the microphone so we can be heard clearly, so we appreciate that. Secondly, we are going to re-implement a practice that's been, hasn't happened for a long time this evening, and we're going to try it out this evening, and that is we are going to have rotating voting. It's something that was done when I first sat on council, and it's something that changed when we had a change in leadership, and I had completely forgotten about the practice until I was reminded of it at the last meeting, and so we were going to retry that. So for the first vote, Sue would be the first vote, and then after about the seventh vote, this councilperson Layman would be the last vote. So it'll rotate. Councilperson Podak would be the second first vote. Councilperson Cassidy would be the third first vote, and so on. That gives everybody the opportunity to be both first and last when we vote. So it's not always the same person casting the last vote or the first vote. So we are going to try to put that into practice tonight. And if need be, we'll make some cheat sheets for future meetings, but that'll be a new practice or a revisited practice from the past. With that said, if you could, we'll call the council people.
Sue Layman?
Here.
Bob Podak?
Here.
Good Cassidy?
Here.
Tom Baker?
Here.
Brady Hall?
Here.
Amy Mendoza?
Here.
Tom Lake?
Here.
All right. We do have three sets of minutes that we need to approve this evening. If you're so inclined to do so, we have the March 20th minutes, the April 2nd minutes, and the April 16th minutes. Hopefully, we'll be able to clean these up tonight. I would like to start with the March 20th minutes. And those are not in your packet this evening, because they were priorly sent to you electronically.
I don't believe I received the March 20th, you said, minutes.
Do you know what date you sent those on?
April 22nd, they went out, everybody.
Okay.
The March 20th ones?
They're attached to the April 2nd.
Okay. We got the April 2nd and the April 19th, but I must have overlooked that.
I have them here, and I approve, or I went through them, so I'll make a motion
to approve the March 20th meeting minutes. For a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Layman, a second by Baker, to approve the March 20th meeting minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Abstain.
Lake?
Abstain.
And Layman?
Layman, yes, thank you.
That motion does carry. The March 20th minutes have been approved. Moving to the April 2nd minutes.
I would like to move to amend the April 2nd meeting minutes to replace April 19th with April 16th under both the Finance and Law and Ordinance Committee reports, and to include under Old Business, the resolution to enter into a joint cooperating agreement for the CHIP program and an ordinance to repeal Chapter 153, both which should be listed as a second reading. I believe those two items under Old Business were omitted in the meeting minutes.
I would second that amendment.
So we have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Podak, to make those amended changes to the April 2nd minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
If that does carry, the motion to amend has went through, and now we're looking for approval.
Motion to adopt or approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy, to adopt the April 2nd minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Abstain.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Carries. Moving into the April 16th minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker, to approve the minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Paul?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
They are adopted. We will move into the communication portion. Clerk, do you have any communication?
I have a letter to read. Dear friends of Good Shepherd Home, as a friend of our facility, you are cordially invited to attend the honoring our veterans celebration on May 24th at Good Shepherd Home. Guests are asked to arrive and check in at reception around 10 o'clock a.m. that morning. The ceremony held in Central Park will begin at 10:30 a.m. After the indoor portion of the ceremony, guests and residents will proceed to the front parking lot for the outdoor portion of the ceremony. Veterans honored include our Good Shepherd Home residents, Villa residents, Poplar Ridge Apartments, Wesley Village and Commons. We also have invited area veterans groups to attend, our city mayor, the police, the fire departments, and others to help us celebrate. A light lunch will be provided following the service outside in the pavilion. In the event of inclement weather, lunch will be provided indoors. Please RSVP by May 17th to Juanita Mockensturm at 419-937-1801, or she provided her email address. If you would like to help with any part of the service, please contact Juanita. She sincerely, Juanita Mockensturm, Activity Director of Good Shepherd Home.
And you all received a copy of that at your seat. So if you wish to go to that, make sure you reach out to her, and you've all been invited. Any other communications?
That is all.
All right, thank you. Reporter committees, Finance Committee?
Nothing new.
Thank you. Public Affairs Committee?
The first Fostoria Farmers and Artisans Market of the season in celebration of moms and kids will be held downtown this Thursday, May 9th, starting at 4 p.m. The next Farmers Market, Let's Go Gardening, will be on Saturday, May 18th, at 9 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Law and Ordinance Committee?
Just as a courtesy reminder, I plan to move to place the second reading of the first listed ordinance concerning the traffic control map back on the table during Old Business this evening with the intent of not adopting it at the third reading due to changes that will be forthcoming. The Law and Ordinance Committee will meet again on Tuesday, May 21st, at 5:15 here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, reports of officers. Mr. Mayor? Microphone?
It is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, so if Mr. Scheeter would step up, I would like to make a proclamation. Whereas motorcycle riding has become a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation, and whereas it is important that all drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road, and whereas the safety hazards created by motorists who fail to watch for motorcycles on the streets and highways are of prime concern to motorcyclists, and whereas it is especially important that the citizens of Fostoria recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the American Bikers Aim Towards Education of Ohio is an organization that is actively promoting the operation, training, and awareness of motorcycles, and whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles, and to honor the many contributions motorcyclists make to the communities in which they live and ride, now therefore, I Donald Manell, Mayor of the City of Fostoria, do hereby proclaim May 24th, May 2024, as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in the City of Fostoria, and ask that all drivers look twice for motorcycles on our roadways.
Thank you, Mayor Manell.
Thank you.
Fostoria has always been very supportive of our, of our safety initiatives, as well as anytime we have something going on for fundraising or whatever, Fostoria has always been very welcome, welcoming to us. I'm very proud to be a member of this community. Thank you.
Can we get a picture of you guys together? Holding that proclamation.
Here, let me, do you want to step around here, or?
Sure. Something about me? All right, there we go. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to give notice of a meeting of the Fostoria Records Commission. There will be a regular meeting of the Fostoria Records Commission on Thursday, August 15th, 2024, at 2 p.m. in the municipal building conference room. Also, with regards to the food truck legislation, I want to emphasize that this is not new legislation. It was originally passed in 2019. As you saw from the redlined version sent to you, we are simplifying the ordinance by removing some of the prohibitive language. We have shortened the application from six pages to four pages. We have not been enforcing this legislation, but plan to begin enforcement going forward, assuming that you pass the legislation. The fee for food truck is $100 per year to register in Fostoria. For special events held on public property where food trucks are invited to participate, there is no additional charge, but there is a $250 deposit required for the event to ensure that the area is cleaned up. If the cleanup is adequate, the $250 deposit is returned.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few things that are on your agenda tonight. First of all, in the appropriations piece, you'll see there's one in there for a new mower for the cemetery. They had planned to make it through the year with that mower. Unfortunately, a mower didn't want to make it through the year and gave out on them. And as you have seen and probably dealt with, there's a lot of mowing needs to get done. So if you could make sure we pass that tonight, get that mower for Felix so he can keep on getting things ready for Memorial Day. The second piece that you have in there deals with a house that was in a house fire, had no insurance. We've given some time for them to demolish it, and they weren't able to get that accomplished. We worked with them as best we could. Eventually, that house was assigned over to the city. We'll be demolishing it. We have reached out to Health Department for the demolition and debris part of it. So the portion that we're asking for is the part that the Health Department won't pay for, which is the demolition part. So we had to move some money in order to make that happen, so we can get that house demolished. And we do have a purchase order in place for a company to demolish that. It's just a matter of getting the funds in place to get it done. So if you would please pass that as an emergency. Also, if you'll look at the chicken ordinance, which was passed previously, I know that Jeff has several folks waiting for permits. And if you could pass that tonight after this reading, since it was already passed previously, then Jeff could get those taken care of and get those permits out to everyone and enforce the new version instead of signing them to the old version of the chicken ordinance, if you would please. So that's it for me.
Clarification?
Yes.
The ordinance for the house fire, the demolition, is that in Old Business, or is it?
It's in New Business and Appropriations.
And when was, oh, that's part of the appropriations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There was two pieces in it for the appropriations.
Okay, so it's two pieces in one ordinance. Perfect. Okay, that settles that question then.
Yes, thank you.
I was looking for a third.
No, it was all put in one.
We're good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then, Law Director?
Thank you. I just have a small list. First, a friendly reminder to get your financial disclosures done if you haven't already. The deadline is May 15th. In regards to the Old Business, I know Councilperson Mendoza mentioned the traffic, the two traffic ordinances. So I know the intent is to untable and vote that down. If for some reason it was to get passed, we would just need to amend that to remove the stop sign portions, because the stop sign portions are included in the new traffic control map ordinance that is further down in Old Business. So I know that's a little confusing. So just to clarify, unless anyone has any questions on that. Then I have been in contact with our publisher for our codified ordinances in going through our update, updating our code. They found a conflict between the past marijuana legislation that we passed last year and the new Ohio Revised Code. So they are considering our city ordinance on the marijuana laws and penalties to be repealed by implication, and they are including the Ohio Revised Code language in our new update. So, any questions on that? And finally, so our publisher did notify me that the update is complete on her end. She has passed it on to the IT people. They said that the online update should be completed this week. I did check right before council. It hasn't been completed yet. It's not updated, but it should be this week. And next council meeting, we will have legislation to approve the replacement pages, and I will have physical copies of the replacement pages for everyone. And you, Mr. Allison, I have a physical copy for you, too. It's quite lengthy, but I'll have that for you, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you. We will now move into the public portion of the meeting. We have one person that requested speaking time, so we will start with Ms. Tyson, and then I'll give further instruction after she has concluded.
I have a lot today. I'm Deb Tyson, 800 Woodford Avenue, Lot 9. I want to thank everyone, both here and here, for showing up tonight. I had sent out an email to all the council, and we had a little bit of issue, but we might have got that fixed. And I was just trying to make sure that with the new website, that was the way, when you look at your bios, that people can contact you, because a lot of people talk to me and ask me to speak for them. They don't want to speak. And I actually have one piece of that tonight. And I want to thank you for your information on the land bank. I did call the prosecuting attorney's office. They put me in touch with somebody in the office. She informed to me I needed to call the Economic Development, which is at the Learning Center. And I talked to Renee Smith, and of course, she knows me, and all my questions were answered. However, a land bank is not what everybody thinks. Where did I go here? Land bank is partly by the county commissioners and partly by the Health Department. And then it goes to a board of revision before it comes back to the land bank. And Hancock County does not have one of them. Only Seneca does. That's information from that. I have, I hope everybody has pen and paper or their notebook in front of them, because I do expect that they are going to take this down. There is a meeting at 8 a.m. tomorrow, Loudon Township, at 9970 West Township Road 112, Fostoria, Ohio. And I was invited, not quite sure why, but they said it was very important that I show up. Then somebody reached out and asked if I had called. I got two calls from them. Yes, I called them back. They are expecting me. But the public is invited, and they say it's a very important meeting, so I will be there. I had to change a few things. And I like to know, I don't want to answer yet till the end, but why is it located in Bascom but has a Fostoria address? Now, for the second one, the Township Washington meeting, which Win Waste will be at, to petition for an apiaria 14 acres with the pond is at the firehouse at 106 Gibson Street, Arcadia, Ohio, and that is at 7 p.m. tomorrow. With that said, I called to Reynoldsburg and talked to the Department of Agriculture. County commissioners, along with the Department of Agriculture, are to appoint somebody over an apiaria. I can't say it right, so forgive me, but that's the 14-acre bee thing. I had done some other research, and according to what Win Waste is proposing, what they're proposing would actually kill the bees. I have inspector on speed dial. They do have an inspector in Hancock County. He has been doing this for 52 years, and he told me, would I mind calling him either way? And I says, oh, I'll call you even if I ain't allowed. And so I have the information. Anybody else wants it, I'd be glad to share. Let's see what else here. Oh, yes. I was asked, like I said, some people don't want to speak, about the recycling program that was published a year ago. And I'm going to pass this along. That is June of 2023. We are almost at June. We're just shy. And that's one of the answers I would like is, where are we at in that process? With that said... And if I run out of time, forgive me. I have one last thing. Here, we have, see here. Got that, got that. Okay, I said everything I need to say. But yeah, so basically, if they would pass that, because the commission, the zoning in Washington Township would pass it for some reason, we're going to have dead bees. But I have faith in this inspector. He's been doing it for 52 years. He actually took my phone call while he was driving. He pulled over, and we talked for an hour and a half. Man's never met me. And he gave me all the information I need and said he would share anything else. So I did invite him to the meeting as well, but he can't make it. Other obligations. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Just a clarification. You said Loudon Township was Bascom and Fostoria?
Okay. If we go in the middle of Bascom, where 18 and 635 are, you go one street over, and it's right where it's at. So I want to know how it's Fostoria, because it's dead in Bascom.
How what is Fostoria?
It's got a Fostoria address.
Loudon Township Hall?
Yep.
Yeah, everybody in that whole area is Fostoria addresses. Where the Township Hall is, where the meetings have been held for their zoning, those are all Fostoria addresses. Even the landfill is a Fostoria address.
Well, I knew that, but so you're saying there is no Bascom addresses?
It has to do with which post office services the area, and in this case, the Fostoria Post Office services that area has a Fostoria address. And zip it.
You can have a PO box in Bascom, but I don't believe there's any actual rural Bascom addresses. They're either Tiffin or Fostoria.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is it's hard on GPS to get a street thing. And you know they're doing construction on 18, so I wouldn't take that. That, I meant, you know, because I'm not guaranteed that I'm going to get on time, because you never know. But any other questions?
I'd just comment with regards to the recycling. Now that we have warm weather, we're preparing to pour the pad, and we will be doing construction of the pad and the poles and the cameras and the lights. So hopefully, we'll have that done in the next 30 to 45 days.
Okay. Well, that sounds good to me. We're going to keep an update on it if we get a delay or anything?
We will let you know when it's completed and ready to go, because it will take additional advertising and notices and what we can accept and what we cannot accept.
Well, I like that. And when everybody's done looking at the papers, if they give them back to me, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, it is the general public comment portion. We ask that if you would like to speak, to please come up to the podium, write your name on the piece of paper there with your address, so we can get it in our written record more effectively, whether that's relevant at this point or not. But please do that till we figure out something else, and try to limit your speaking time to three minutes.
Amen. I'm glad that you're flexible on that. She was up here for eight.
But it's a little bit different, because she requested speaking time, and so our charter allows her to speak up to 10 minutes. But anybody who's not on the agenda is requesting is allowed to speak up to three minutes.
How would I go about requesting that, just in case?
Have to contact the clerk.
Okay.
And we can talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm just making sure I have all the rules to comply. I'm up here, I own a food truck, and I operate my food truck in the lot back there, which is private property. The new rules that came out, I just want clarity on. So I don't know if this is a dialogue or we go back and forth. I don't, this is my first time here. But it says that an event permit must be filled out. And what do you call an event? One truck, or two trucks, or five trucks?
An event has nothing to do with the number of trucks. An event, a special event occurs when the event coordinator requests that the streets be closed. So if Main Street is closed for a special event like the Latino Fest, and they invite food trucks, that constitutes a special event. It does not, it does, you can have as many trucks as you want on private property.
Okay. Well, that answers that. And the $250 fee? Well, that answers that. And the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. I started to get clarity over here on the side for a minute. That has, that has nothing to do with me, correct? It's just written in a gray area, so I'm here to get clarity when I read them.
It's the two the two the two hundred and fifty dollar
Even on private property?
No, the two hundred and fifty dollar event, dollar deposit applies to special events. The person who takes out the permit for the special event has to deposit two hundred and fifty dollars. If everybody cleans up afterwards and the city doesn't have to go in and clean up, they get the two hundred and fifty dollars back. If the city has to go in and clean up, they're going to keep the two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, just one more time, Mayor, because I like to make sure that we're clear on things. I'm here for the private property. The event things and the event permit is a whole different thing.
This, this legislation does not address private property.
Okay, there's private property in your rules. Did you read them? Because there's private property in there. You stated them in the new rules. Okay, for, so when we open up three food trucks back there, it's not a special event, correct? Okay. Now, how much would you want that permission? One, is this a one-time thing? Okay, um, I don't have it written on a paper or notarized. It's in Facebook messages. Would that do? Or do you want something a little bit more official?
We'd prefer it to be written.
Written and notarized? I'm just
Doesn't have to be notarized, just written and signed, signed by the owner.
Signed by the owner. Okay, and then the fire inspection. Is that a one-time deal like my food inspection? Because I have license through the Seneca County to operate from March to March. So when I get inspected by the fire department, am I paying that one-time fee? And then I'm done for the year? Or is that going to be reoccurring?
Well, so your, so the entire permit is
Eric.
Entire permit is, is the, the fire inspection, that make sure you have your health department inspection.
Okay.
And your vendor's license and that liability insurance, just in case something happens.
Right.
So those are the four pieces of that in order to get passed and that's, then that's good for the year.
Okay, and then in it, in it, because it's a, a lot of questions that I have that I just want clarity on. Because it's written in gray for me. Is, is that I have to have a plan of water and electric? Is that the same plan that I have to submit to the Seneca County Health Department? So I just, I have to resubmit it to you guys? Is that what you want?
As long as you have your health department, as long as the health department's inspected your, your food truck and, and they've okayed it.
Okay.
Then to provide the plan along, that you provided to the health department.
Okay, so that's the same plan?
It's the same, it's the exact same one, yeah.
Okay, and, and then the last one is the hundred dollar fee. That's because last time it was set for a season. There's four seasons in a year.
Just once a year.
There's once a year.
One time a year.
Okay, so like, let's just say in December, but we don't know the year. Will I receive a badge that I'm able to operate in Fosteria?
Uh, I know Jeff is working on some sort of certificate that you'll be able to have in your food truck that shows that you've already gotten all the things you needed for
Okay, and then I'm good to go for the
And then similar to what we do with, uh, because everybody who operates in the city as, um, like a tree trimmer and things like that, they have to come register with the city, show some liability insurance. So there'll be a database made just like that for food trucks.
Okay.
And, and then you'll be, and you'll, it'll show whether you've come in and gotten your thing or not. And then they'll, I know Jeff is working on some sort of cert- certification.
And who's Jeff?
Jeff in the compliance office, the zoning office.
Jeff in the compliance office. So if I have more questions, I would ask Jeff or?
Yeah, or you can just come in, just, or make, just, just get ahold of me.
Like I said, there's just some things coming out and I wanted clarity, but I got them now. So most of that event, I don't have to fill an event permit out then on private property.
No, no, just, and just like we used to do when, when you do the food truck Fridays.
Right.
You just, that event
That was an event. It, we were impeding traffic. Now I don't impede traffic.
Yeah, and you're on private property, so that doesn't apply.
So that'd be a whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for me?
I do. Before you go away from the microphone, can you state your name and address for the record?
Are you going to follow me home?
No.
Okay. Stefan Castillo, one one two seven North Township Road twenty-one, Fosteria, Ohio.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does Zach want to get a picture? Because I noticed, he likes them.
Stefan, set up a, set up, we'll come in, we'll, you can talk about some more if you want.
Okay, I'm, well, I'm pretty clear. I was just making sure, is the event permit had me thrown off, the two hundred and fifty had me thrown off? But thank you for clarifying. I really appreciate that.
If you do have some more questions, just, just get ahold of us, just stop in, we'll
Okay.
We'll clear it up for you.
Just a side note, like for the fire inspection for trucks in Fosteria?
Yeah.
Maybe like a one-day thing so we can all just run through there?
I think eventually
Having eventually like, you know?
I think that's what we've seen in a lot of cities that, that do these, have a one-day inspection. So eventually that's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
And when we, so once this ordinance is passed, we'll probably get something like that set up where you guys can all
Well, that's what we try and do. There's three food trucks in my family. That's why I'm here.
Just make it simple for you.
Uh, we try and get the health department to hit us all same time.
Yeah, we want to make it as simple as possible.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Yep, come on up.
My name's Elvira Ortiz. I live down the street at one sixty East Tiffin, Fosteria, Ohio. We have the Mexican store as well as the food truck as well. And I've got some case in points that Stephen had brought up, but I've got some additional. Now, in regards to the special events, I understand that it's like the Saint Wendellin or Latino Fest. They are the ones that close off the street and get all that organized. My question is, is this two hundred and fifty dollars for the organizers or for the food trucks? Deposit?
For the organizer who takes out the permit.
So we're not required to give two hundred and fifty dollars?
No.
Okay, because that's where my confusion was, was if we had to give out two fifty on top of paying the fee for Saint Wendellin or the Latino Fest to come participate. And then the two fifty and then all this other stuff. Um, one of the questions that I seen in the YouTube was that this was based on problems that had come up to the city council or to the city in regards to the food trucks being downtown and everything else. That's how I interpreted the whole process of this new procedures for the food trucks. Now, is that only going to be for like the food trucks? What happens if I set up a shop and I want to sell things on the side up? Do I need to have a special vendors for that?
That is part of the legislation, yes.
Okay, and then as far as one, some of the things that I had seen in here for the food trucks, you guys interpreted on the YouTube that you're basing it off of what Perrysburg does, correct?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, that's how it was stated on the YouTube, that all this was being
That's not
planned out.
That was not put out by us.
It was the city council meeting. It stated there that it was being based off of what Perrysburg does.
I think, so, so that was one of the things I mentioned, that we were looking at other communities that do these kind of ordinances and trying to find a mix of what made sense. And a lot, a lot of, of some of the stuff that was taken out of here, uh, was, was based on what Perrysburg had done. And like setting up for a week and, and maybe having inspections all done that one day for everybody who's going to go there.
Okay, because when it was stated and how I presumed it to be based off of Perrysburg, I'm wondering why you're trying to do something based off a town or a city that makes the average income is twice of what Fosteria has.
It, it was, it was based on a lot of different communities ordinances, food truck ordinances, and then just compiled into something that made sense for here.
Well, I know Stephen and his nephew set up in Finley. And a lot of the same stuff that you guys are proposing aren't even similar to what Finley does. And they're closer.
Well, for example, Finley does not allow food trucks downtown. Period.
Okay, and why do you guys want to constrict that?
We don't.
It states in your proposed that you do. It states there that you're proposing that, um, on-street parking locations on Main Street and within the city-owned parking lots, that you don't want it.
No, that you need an event, well, just a permit to set up.
Okay.
And that's, that's the same, there's an event permit on our website.
In order for us to set up down here and park like what they do in front of Axe or down here in front of the Smokehouse, you're considering that closing off the street?
Well, no, because what happens is like in the Axe and the Smokehouse, they, they're the ones that really are supposed to be applying for the permit because they're having a, and really a special event because they're having something outside of, of what they normally do on a daily basis. So they're having a food truck set up on Public Street. So they just, they, they just send us an event permit asking that they are able to set up in that space for the day.
So then they pay a two hundred and, or propose, they will
That is just an event permit. That, that's not a special event permit.
So there's a difference between event permit and a special permit?
Yeah.
Okay, now will Urban Brewery be required to do that as well?
Yep.
Okay, because the another part in the proposed that you guys got is there's got to be a four-feet section on the sidewalk that doesn't stop the pedestrians and that you can't put tables or chairs on the sidewalk.
That
Are they going to get rid of theirs?
That permits, that prevents people from walking on the sidewalk.
Okay, but are they going to get rid of their sidewalks?
They have, they're able to, there's an opening for people to walk down the sidewalk.
Okay, so, but if I walk down the sidewalk with my scooter, which is another thing, I'm handicapped. And I don't like the fact that I come to a public meeting and I have to climb the steps because I would have to walk all the way around the building to get to the elevator. And then I had to walk up and that's why I was late. And I don't know if you guys had agendas out here for us to pick up for the minutes proposed. But that's another situation. But I can't go through there with my scooter and somebody walking with me unless one person's walking behind me or I run over somebody that's walking in front of me.
Yeah, they just have to have clearance so people can, can get through. That's, that's what the sidewalk ordinance is.
Okay, so that's what this proposed ordinance that you guys are stating about sidewalk, not having tables and chairs. But because they put in
Sidewalks that, that, that are blocked by tables and chairs, that don't have an area for people to walk past.
So these guys are exempt from that?
They're not exempt from it.
Well, apparently it is because they're saying that you can
They, they are giving the clearance. Yeah.
This statute is on, or this ordinance is only referring to mobile food vendors. Only to mobile food vendors. So when they have a mobile food vendor there and they block the alley with their trucks so that the mobile foods can be parked right there in front, are they doing anything that hinders anything?
I don't know. If you're going to, if you want to talk specifically about Urban Woody, I know that alley that runs in between the, the, the Urban Woody and the Masonic is a private alley. It belongs
To, it's a private alley?
It is a private alley. That's not a public alley.
That's not a public alley, okay.
It had at some point been, um, vacated at some point. I don't know exactly when. But it's been that way since, since, uh, since I've known.
Okay, and then you said that the, the mobile or the farmer's market's going to be Thursday. Is it going to be here or is it going to be way down the street?
It's down at the, on the other end, uh, from, uh, Center Street down to North Street.
Center down to North Street. Down, well, no, that's the opposite way.
Starting at the park at, right?
Where that new across from where the Buckeye
Yeah, it's down on Main, it'll be on Main Street
Yeah.
From Center to
Where the old building used to be and the guys tore it down. That was the, um, retail or secondhand.
Yeah.
So it's going to be there.
Yep.
What happened up here? Isn't this, this, the Fosteria's property up here on the corner?
No.
Fosteria Community Property or
There are five different landowners of that property.
There's the
That was
Urban Honey, Honeycomb and them guys got the stage and right there in front.
That's on their property.
Then you got Nicholas Shoemaker, that's the next one. And then the next one and these ones that go across Main Street are all Fosteria Community Development.
See, that's not a, that's not a city event. That is a Chamber of Commerce event. That is the farmer's market and they chose to set up down there and, and, um, not use the green space anymore.
Well, what I was told is the day that they were just set up down here, they got ran off.
Yeah, I don't
So that's just bad rumors.
I can't speak to that. I don't, I just know they chose to, to move to a different location.
They said it was easier for people who were handicapped to get around on the street when the streets closed down there rather than get around in the grass up here in the green space.
No, what's harder to get around for the handicapped is the broken sidewalks that go down my, my road to get to
I'm specifically talking about the farmer's market as to why they're down there.
So being down on two streets is easier than going through the grass and the parking lot that's paved?
Well, you can park in the paved parking lot and go down there because it's adjoining. It's right across the corner.
Well. And then I have here. You already, I think, addressed the compliance is Jeff and zoning. So he would be the one making the decisions for if the stuff is not picked up or cleaned for, for the event, special event person?
Yeah, at some point, I don't know if he would be the exact person. He's going to be the person who, who puts together the permitting process. Um, then I think the rest is going to be based on what the city departments would have to clean up after a special event or not.
And then how are they going to base that? Is that just
Whether they have to pick up stuff and haul it away, yeah, and then, because you, that's going to be the basis, what they ended up, how much work they had to perform in order to clean up after a special event.
Okay, so then if all this is going to be not new, because you stated that it was there, it's just going to be nor, more enforced now, correct? Are you going to enforce garage sales like what other towns do for permits and stuff like that to help recoup money?
I think that's
We, we looked
Subject, but
Yeah, we looked at that at one, excuse me. We looked at that at one point because it was brought up in front of us at city council. And they cited the city of Bryan, Ohio, I believe it was. So I looked at Bryan, Ohio, and they had, uh, withdrawn their legislation because it was impossible to oversee.
Yeah, because the city of Fremont does require a garage sale permit in order to do it. Um, but I was just throwing out other ideas because of the fact that my perception of this being something new to help recoup money into the city of Fosteria. Now, whether it's a presumption on a lot of us, uh, Fosterians or if it's just a presumption of a lot of people that vent on Facebook. Um, but one of the additional things is if I were to try to do anything special on my corner, I know I can't block Route twelve off. Which I know they have in the past for like when they come back through or I think for the parades or what have you or some other things that they get blocked off down there. Um, I would have to come up to the city to speak with somebody, Jeff, to do something, anything down there on that end?
Depending upon what you were going to do, yes.
And if we were to invite these food trucks to come over on that section down there with us having private property, I would only have to okay it for them?
Yes, if you're the property owner, yes.
Okay, and as far as across the street that now the city mows, which used to be the car wash, is the city owner of that property?
I don't know.
Because the city, I believe, is the one that tore down the car wash. The city is, I believe, who mows. Because the city is who mows up here.
I'd have to look. I don't know.
Okay. I think I covered everything. Because if you're saying that you're just weren't basing it solely off of Perrysburg because of that situation on street parking sidewalks, I think I got everything covered. Anything questions for me?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Paul Allison, one eighteen and a half, West Center Street, Department Two. Uh, I want to thank the law director for working out with the codifier to bring those things up to date at the library. Of course, we have a print version as well as I will go online and check. I want to, again, I want to thank the law director for doing that and getting it brought up to date. Now, the other thing I mentioned, I live downtown at one eighteen and a half, West Center Street, Department Two. I, I attended every, um, farmer's market last year. There's no problem with There's no problem with walking on the sidewalks, truthfully, uh, that I ever saw. And, uh, when the farmer's market were there, because the, because the booths are basically set up in the street mostly. And I, I, I don't understand quite what was being said to be truthful about that, uh, because you can easily walk on the sidewalk, which I did, to get there. So, uh, I don't understand what, what that comment was. Uh, so again, I thank you for, law director again, for working that out. Thank you very much. I'll make sure I write this down, too.
Tammy also deserves a thanks. She did most of that. She coordinated mostly with the publishers.
Well, I.
She deserves most of the credit.
I was clerk of council way back when, and I knew I did all that work, basically.
Yeah, so you should be thanking her.
I'll thank Tammy for doing the work.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Any other members of public wish to address counsel? Seeing none, we'll move into old business.
In ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?
I move to place back on the table.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake to place this back on the table. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Hall?
It's actually, you're taking it off the table. It's tabled now. We have to take it off the table.
Motion to take it off the table.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
It is off the table and back on the docket.
What?
Did you read that?
Yeah, I read it.
Does that become a reading, or does she have to read it now to make it a third?
In ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?
Was the second reading of that ordinance.
A resolution to authorize, direct, and empower the mayor on behalf of the city of Fosteria, Ohio to execute an application with the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Community Enhancement for up to $1,050,000 in funds for program year 2024, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, chip funds.
Who to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Lake, a second by Cassidy. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Does carry, this becomes resolution number 2024-31. Yeah, whenever you're ready.
In ordinance amending chapter 905 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled City Tree Commission.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Mendoza, a second by Podak. Would you call, call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance carries, it is ordinance number 2024-32.
In ordinance to amend section 1355.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, titled Adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Cassidy, a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, ordinance number 2024-33.
In ordinance to amend section 505.21 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, to be titled Regulations Regarding Keeping of Chickens and Declaring Emergency to Exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend a three reading rule by Mendoza, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Mendoza to adopt this ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
It does pass, it is ordinance number 2024-34. Thank you.
In ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance amending section 1127.05 of chapter 1127 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled R3 Multiple Residence District.
That is the second reading of that ordinance. The last piece of old business.
In ordinance amending section 1125.01 of chapter 1125 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled Building or Accessory Building Regulations.
That is the second reading of that ordinance. On to new business, please.
In ordinance amending section 754.04 and 745.05 of chapter 745 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, entitled Mobile Food Vendors and Peddlers, Solicitors, and Itinerant Merchants, respectively.
That is the first reading of that ordinance.
In ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2023-66, Permanent 2024 Appropriations by Decreasing Appropriations and Appropriating from Unappropriated Funds in the General Fund and Declaring an Emergency.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions?
Second.
We have a motion by Lake and a second by Layman to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
This is the one for the mower, correct? Okay.
Or in the house. Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Hall, a second by Cassidy. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
That becomes ordinance number 2024-35. Is there any need to go into executive session this evening? You know, we'll go into miscellaneous. Um, I have a couple pieces. Um, first of all, I'm working on creating a job description for the clerk of council because of the transition from the written to the digital version. Um, I would like to present a draft of that at the next meeting to maybe do a work session for a few minutes during the miscellaneous portion, to kind of hammer out any other things. I'm assuming we probably need to pass a resolution on the actual job description then, which hopefully by the end of that, we'll have a revised version that can go into a resolution that can be for, ready for the next meeting. I think it's important that we kind of spell out those as we transition from written work to digital because it doesn't make the written stuff disappear, but we need to memorialize and capture the essence of the digital portion of that work. So I think it's time to present and create a job description for that. So I will have that prepared for the next meeting. Um, so I'm just requesting to keep in mind that I'd like to do a little bit of a work session, it doesn't have to be long, at the end of the meeting the next time. Um, secondly, we are given an invitation by the Wood County Sheriff's Office to nominate someone from this body to be part of a county 911 program review committee. Um, they are asking members of legislative authority of a municipal corporation in the county selected by the majority of the legislative authorities and municipal corporations, so us, um, that you may be asked then to represent the city of Fosteria for this Wood County 911 program. My first logical thought was, does any, do any of you live in Wood County? Which I don't think any of you do. So that means we would, it can really be anybody, but we're looking for a nominee from your body. If anybody's interested, maybe you can speak up and someone can nominate you. Um, this could be something that you're never asked to do anything, we just send the name on and say this person's willing to serve on this committee, if requested. Any interest?
I may be interested, but it comes down to the same thing that we just went through with the food truck ordinances, that that request that they need somebody, it's like, totally, what is it for? How often they gonna meet? I, I, there's three Cs, as I sat there Sunday morning reading through this, I just want to add that I wish that things were a little more clear, a little more concise, and a little more complete when we get them. And if they come out with the three Cs, we wouldn't have people having so many questions, and we wouldn't be catching, you know, back on social media for trying to do something that we're really not doing. There's no increasing, there's no, you know, it's really nothing new, it's just clarifying it. But it wasn't very clear because I myself had to call the mayor today to get, or the safety service director to get, you know, that clarification. And I know other people got clarification. So, let's try and make it very clear and concise and complete, and then we're doing what we say we're always gonna do is be transparent. Because when we don't get the three Cs in there, all of a sudden, things happen. And we don't need those things to happen because we're not really trying to do anything. We're just trying to get it out there in front of people, and they're taking it the wrong way.
Um, I will tell you, this particular letter doesn't fulfill any of those three Cs, but I would be more than happy to share this letter with you if you become the nominee for this, um, committee that, again, doesn't.
I would be willing to check into it.
Okay.
If I can, if they can answer the three Cs, possibly.
And, and it's, there's a chance that they may never contact you.
Right.
So. So would someone like to make a motion to put Bob Podak on as our official representative of this unclear committee?
I'll make that, Marsha.
Is there a second?
Sure.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Lake, a second by Layman to express that Bob Podak may be interested in this committee once he gets the clarity needed and the other two Cs. Um, so clerk, would you call the roll, please? Um, let's start with Hall this time, I'm not sure where you're at.
I can't remember either. Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, you are nominated to this committee. Uh, Mr. Manel will contact this group to let them know, and I will, if you don't need this paper back, I will give it to Mr. Podak so he can see though.
I'd like it back eventually, so I can.
All right, maybe make a photocopy after the meeting and.
Fine.
Give him a copy. All right, any other miscellaneous from anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion by Lake, a second by Mendoza. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
All right, we are officially adjourned at 7:05.